Meeting of the Tiverton Town Council to order to go, um, rent stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could take the role.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Janek, present. Counselor Edwards?
Here.
Counselor Burke?
Here.
Counselor Viera?
Present.
Counselor Perry is absent and Counselor Di-Maduris should be around.
Okay, um, excuse me, have before us the consent agenda, approval of town council minutes, April 11th, 2022, regular meeting, approval of council executive session minutes, April 11th, 2022, Counsel Perry abstaining on vote because he was absent. Item B, for B, acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards, commissions, committees, zoning board review two, zoning board of appeals one, recreation and beach one, solar ordinance advisory committee three, dog park advisory committee two. Item four C, acknowledged receipt of reports, treasurer's correct, March 2022, budget and revenue reports. And D, acknowledged receipt of course, sponsors, town of Coventry, resolution in support of Senate Bill 2341 and House Bill 7834, town of Hopkinton, letter in opposition to House Bill 6676, excuse me, Charles, town of Charlestown, resolution in support of House Bill 8055, town of Boroughville condemning the Russian invasion of Ukraine, town of Boroughville, Russian resolution in opposition to Rhode Island, 2022 gun control legislation, town of Boroughville, resolution in opposition to Senate Bill 2050, 2557 and House Bill 7829, number seven, U.S. Department of the Interior Fish and Wildlife Service Coastal Barrier Resources System Hurricane Sandy remapping project report. Does any council member wish to remove anything from the consent agenda for discussion?
Yes, I would like to pull D, 4D2.
4D2. Anybody else? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item 4D4?
This is very interesting, you guys, it has to do with solar taxation levy, assessment of local taxes, so I pulled it. Dear Honorable Members, HB 6676, the purpose of this letter is to express the strong opposition of the Hopkin County Town Council to HB 6676 relating to taxation levy and assessment of local taxes. At its meeting held on April 4th, the town council voted unanimously to send this letter in opposition to this proposed legislation. The above referenced bill would be devastating to the finances of the town of Hopkinton and other rural Rhode Island towns that in recent years have permitted the development of large utility scale solar energy installations in their communities. The explanation provided by the sponsors of this legislation states that it would require cities and towns to assess renewable energy resources to be taxed as tangible property and the real property on which the renewable energy sources are located shall not be reclassified, revalued, or reassessed except farmland, which shall be reclassified, revalued, and taxed at predated farmland classification. Because the act is intended to apply retroactively, Hopkinton's tax assessor estimated the passage of the act would require Hopkinton to refund hundreds of thousands of dollars in property taxes that would not be collected in the future. Such a result would be patently unfair to the many towns like Hopkinton that have sacrificed their open space and rural character for the construction of these solar arrays with the expectation that such arrays would become a valuable taxpaying asset to the community. This legislation would also be rejected because it is contrary to basic principles of tax assessment. A foundational principle of tax assessment is to treat all parties fairly, equitably, whereas this legislation would treat solar developers and investors differently and more favorably than all other property owners because towns would not be allowed to base their tax assessment on the actual fair market value of the land or the actual use that the property enjoys. Further, this legislation ignores the basic principle of appraisal and assessment by not allowing the assessor to consider the highest and best use of such properties. Changes in the zoning of properties to accommodate solar development created a new and very valuable use and the property should be assessed as such. In most, if not all, cases, these large solar developments have already received federal and of state tax credits intended to incentivize construction of renewable energy sources. A further reduction of their property taxes would unfairly shift the tax burden off of these investors and developers who can easily afford it and onto the taxpayers who can least afford it. Unless the state plans to reimburse the cities and towns for the significant loss of revenue, this would amount to an unfunded mandate imposed by the state upon the local municipalities that are already struggling to meet their financial obligations and are subject to intense pressure to permit renewable energy development. Hopkinton is a vibrant community where many people have chosen to live and raise their families because of its charming rural character, high performing regional schools. It is not and should not become a tax haven for powerful energy developers for all the reasons the Hopkin Town Council respectfully crests that the House Municipal Government and Housing Committee reject this proposal or any similar proposals that will relieve energy developers and investors from contributing their fair share of local property taxes. This is very important. It is another unfunded mandate in its nature and it's shifting taxation to the taxpayers, which when we, this was brought to us, we looked at land and what was going to be on it as taxable, would be helpful to the community and also to the green energy. But now, in the middle of everything, they've decided to change the rules. I think it's very important that we do in opposition, but that is up to the council.
Other members?
I, I think it's concerning that it's retroactive also. So I think we could stand to lose a great deal of money in this town too with some of the solar projects that are, are in the works, so.
Why would you even want them?
Right, but we already have some that are already approved.
I know, but we'd lose the money. Okay.
Chris?
So Donna makes a good point, but there's another point that's missing altogether, and that's that we've signed on, many communities have signed on to net metering agreements. I know that we've signed on in North Kingston, South Kingston, that we get a credit for some of our electricity here based on the net metering agreements. If they can't make money based on the rollback of the taxes, what's going to happen with our agreements? I mean, we signed on to these anticipation of generating credits for our community. Those agreements are just going to be null and void because they had to now pay exorbitant amounts in taxes that they weren't anticipating. So you might want to add that to part of that as well, that, you know, it would affect a lot of agreements.
So you want something added?
Yeah, it might affect a lot of communities who are getting net metering tax credits.
Oh, that's right, that's right. All right, well.
So, anyone else?
Well, the only thing I'm going to ask is, at the end of this legislation, it says, this act would take effect, no, no, um, yeah, this act would take effect upon passage and would apply retroactively to the date of passage or to some other date?
It would be to the date of passage. Retroactively from the date of passage. Correct, Mike?
I don't, I don't know.
I agree, I think.
Well, my own question is, is that an assumption or is it just automatic?
You've got to have a start, Dee. I can't get on the computer, get on.
So Mike's looking at that. My suggestion is that we refer this to the assessor and the administrator to do an evaluation of it for us in terms of the impact, and partially because the bill has, I don't know if there's a Senate version, they don't cite a Senate version, but the House version has been pulled.
So, I'm sorry, it would be retroactive to the last assessment date, so that was, we just finished the assessment on 12/31.
Twenty.
Twenty. So it would be retroactive to that, Dee.
So the sponsor has asked for this to be postponed, which often means that somebody has talked to the sponsor and helped them understand that it at least needs more work before it goes anywhere. So I would, that's what I would suggest that we do, but I don't think we can vote on, we can just recommend it to the administrator, and certainly if they come forward with a recommendation to us at the next meeting, they can also come forward with a resolution. Because we can't do anything tonight on it.
No.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's, yeah.
It doesn't have to be drafted.
And Chris wanted the metering in it.
Yeah, so Chris is going to talk with the assessor, look at the impact, and then as necessary, bring forward a resolution if, if needed next week or next meeting. Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to accept the correspondence under item D2, town of Hopkinton, letter in opposition to House Bill 6676?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jay, seconded by Deb. Any further discussion, all those in favor? Thank you. Do we have anybody sign up for public comments? Does anybody wish to make any comments on any, other than the public hearings, we're going to get to the public hearings, any items on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none.
Like to make a motion, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, please.
Like to move up 7A, Board of Licensing, up to the next agenda item, please.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Made by Counselor Viera, recommended by Counselor Edwards, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so before us is item 7A, Charles Mulcahy, 65 Beach Avenue, Tiverton, requesting approval of private detective license renewal. Who has anything on that, anybody? No? Let me just move my paperwork.
I will say that this is a renewal, Charlie's been before the council a number of times for his detective license.
And Madam Clerk?
And he's, I believe, a retired Tiverton police officer as well.
Madam Clerk, everything's in order with this?
Yes, it is.
Any discussion? If not, I'll accept a motion to, on this.
Like to make a motion requesting approval of a private detective license renewal for Charles Mulcahy of Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Donna? Any discussion, all those in favor approving Mr. Mulcahy for a license renewal? Unanimous?
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to make a motion to move eight A, eight A appointments and resignations, Historic Cemeteries Commission, Mr. Thomas Snell, please. I can move all three together. I'd like to also move B and C of eight appointments and resignations.
Forward on the agenda, any second on that, to move those forward on the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, I, or raise your hand? Okay, unanimous, so Historical Cemeteries Commission, Mr. Snell?
Yes, sir.
This is a reappointment for you for a term ending 4/15/2025. I believe you are here fairly recently.
I'm my neighbor. Yes, of course.
So, I'm not going to burden you with describing why, you've described your passion for this several times to us, so does anybody have any questions for Mr. Snell?
No, just a comment that we also did receive a letter from Jim Spears, highly recommending that you be reappointed to the, to the Historical Cemeteries.
Thank you, Jim.
Additionally, I spent Sunday afternoon with him clearing a cemetery and he didn't stop. He wore me out.
Good. I will entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Snell to a, three year, to fill the vacancy, actually, reappoint Mr. Snell to a term ending 4/15/2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, we don't have to waive, right, because it's reappointed, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And now moving on to item 8B, Christine, if you want to come up, Economic Development Commission, we have a vacancy due to a resignation, Mr. Pfeifer had, had to resign recently, so Christine is seeking to fill that vacancy for a term ending 7/15/2025, and if you remember, Christine is our representative to Discover Newport, we appointed her in the summer-ish, last spring?
September, October, I forget when I was actually.
And has been actively attending the, and participating in the EDC meetings since then. Christine, you want to say anything?
I was asked by Renee if I would consider it because as a condition of the appointment to the Board of Discover Newport, I was asked to participate in the meetings and I haven't missed one since, and having a quorum is important to her, and I said, well, if no one else wants to do it, I'm here anyways, I'm happy to do it. And as I said in my application, if the, if the council had someone else they wanted to represent, it's fine with me too, but I'm, I'm there anyways, so I'm happy to do it.
Renee, I see you eager to say something. Can you pull the mic over to you, Renee?
She's being much too modest. Christine has been an asset to the EDC ever since she was appointed, she is very vocal and very well, well, expresses herself very well, unlike me right now, and she is also a business owner in the town, she's an active member of the Tiverton Four Corners Business Association, she has a lot of experience working up in Providence as well because you had a business, you had businesses up in Providence, so we, she has a lot of experience in the area and she has been an asset to our meetings and I, I definitely would love to have her on the EDC, so you, you have been there as well, so I hope you approve her.
And just to clarify, her appointment to Discover Newport, to represent us on Discover Newport, she's never been appointed to the EDC at this point?
No, right, I'd want her to be appointed.
Yep, yep.
Sorry.
And I would echo, you're more than just there, you've had some fantastic ideas, great participation both in the meetings and outside, and certainly a strong advocate for Tiverton and for our business community, so. Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to move, to wa, a motion to waive our policy that we have to wait?
So moved.
Second. Deb and Bill, any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, do I have a motion to appoint Christine Francis of 3842 Main Road to the Economic Development Commission for a term ending 7/15/2025?
So moved.
Second. Deb, Bill, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And Jim, if you want to come up, our last appointment, Open Space and Land Preservation Commission, Jim is seeking reappointment, so that's where the vacancy comes from, requesting reappointment for a term ending 4/15/2025. Jim, do you want to say anything?
Just that I've enjoyed working with the Golden Space people, currently, one of my assigned tasks at the Art and Volunteer Stuff that everybody does is collecting the financial reports from Denise and massaging them to a form that her members can understand.
Great.
I've been doing that for quite some time since Dennis Culberson left town.
Any questions for Jim? Well, I appreciate your volunteerism, both on this, on the solar advisory committee, on the historical cemeteries. No, it's great, thank you. And open space, you know, people think, might think it's just coming to meetings, but it's not, just like historical cemeteries, there's a lot of physical work involved in both of those, so, thank you. So do I have, we don't have to waive because it's a reappointment, do I have a motion to appoint James L. Spears to the Open Space and Land Preservation Commission, reappoint to a term ending 4/15/2025?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Deb, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, so now we're going to move back to public hearings, which is item six on the agenda, first up, 6A, Fort Smith Tiverton Rotary Club, Charlene Patton, approval of sound variance for 64th Annual Father's Day Car Show at Longplex Sports Center, 300 Industrial Way on June 19th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and approval of special event permit non-advertised, continued from our 4/11 meeting and continued previously from our last meeting in March, so thank you for your persistence.
Thank you. So I have a map, if I can just, I'll just give it there in the case, I kind of shrunk it a little bit, so like the main roads are off of it from the last one we had. I did have a meeting with the Chief of Police as well as the Fire?
Marshal.
Marshal, and Chris was there as well. We did sit down and come up with a plan, and then I did also sit with Jim Long at Longplex and explain to him what their plan was, and the writing on the side is from Jim himself. So with the parking being limited, we've kind of moved it to an inside majority show. It'll be probably 80% inside, 20% depending on weather outside, if, depending on the number of cars. We're not sure if we're going to have 100 cars, 200 cars because of change of location and registry right now is very low, so we're, you know, planning on at least having hopefully 100 to maybe 200 cars. And then we did, I did get all of the guidelines as far as what we needed to do to put the cars inside, as far as disconnecting one of the battery cables and how much gas and things like that, we did go over all of that. So the map just shows pretty much, we're going to use the back access road for, at 8 o'clock in the morning for our show cars to come in and the vendors to go up that way. And then parking would just be regular parking, handicap would just be regular handicap parking, and then they would come in the back and go into, there's like bay lift doors, and they would be pushed in with white gloves, you know, four guys is what I was told, you know, push them in after they're inspected and the battery cables taped off. Each indoor spot there is about 80 cars, so depending on what we get, we'll put them into the first two bays of that turf area. Vendors and if we get the permission for music would be inside on the basketball courts. There would be no other events, the arcades would be open for people to come that day, so the arcade would be open, the restaurant upstairs would be open, and we're not going to do any food trucks where the food will be supplied there. The concession, and then he'll have a concession stand like outside and he has like an ice cream window and we'll have those open. The gym will be open, he said that they're on the second floor, but there's only about 30 people that come throughout the day right now, so it won't really take up our parking if they're going to come on Father's Day, I'm not really sure. And then the only area that we would put on the grass would be that front little area that's right where the ice cream window looks at, if we need, if there's, you know, a certain car, somebody that cannot meet the requirements to get inside, then we would use that space there to put, if we need it.
That's where all these little slashes are?
Yeah, right on the front, there is that little grass area before, like the ponds.
I assume there's not really parking on Route 24?
No, 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 no. That was just if we went at the first time, we were like, the access. And then when I did speak, they did say that we would get, I guess, like a fire marshal or fire person to just make sure that they're checking for us, you know, the codes and things like that. Cruz and Bruce would be our announcer, he plays like 5060s music throughout the show for music there, it would, there would be no bands outside. And, I mean, I think that's pretty much it, I don't know if Chris has any additional?
I don't, I did show up to the meeting late, but I do know the chief and the fire marshal have gone through this extensively with her, and they, that worked very well to come up with a plan.
And they're comfortable?
They are comfortable, my only question would be, as it relates to the music, that it would be indoors, not outdoors.
Right, it would be indoors, yes, yes. Yeah, and all the music got changed to inside. I mean, there's like the, yeah, Cruz and Bruce will be inside on the basketball court, I mean, there is that, like, speakers will be, you know, like to go so they could hear it indoors and out, but no bands outside. Yeah.
Can I say something?
Sure, sure.
He's just like a DJ setup, that's basically.
But it's indoors, correct?
Yes, it's indoors on the basketball court.
There's no, there's no outdoor music in the, it doesn't work at all.
No, we changed it all to, like I said, 80%, because of the parking was so limited, I was going to take half and do half and half, but then there would be no spectators and room for anybody.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I think the big thing is the police chief and the fire chief have sort of blessed us.
They said it was okay.
Chris, you don't have any?
No, I don't.
Sounds like the parking issues and the location of the cars has been solved.
Yes.
Even though the bands are on inside, I, I don't think anybody here doubts that the noise is going to get outside.
The day of the event is when?
Father's Day, June 19th. It's a Sunday. We have the show cars and the vendors coming in at 8 o'clock, but the show doesn't start till 9:00.
So it sounds like most of the issues we addressed have been addressed.
Yes.
And it ends at what time?
Five, well, we're saying 4:00, but 5:00 for like the cleanup and things like that, yes.
And so the event actually doesn't start till like 9:00?
It's 9:00 to 4:00.
9:00 to 4:00.
Yes.
And he will be permitted to have events in his structure after they're cleared out? I mean, it's not like.
Right, yeah, nothing, I mean, other than the gym and the restaurant is what, and the arcades is all he'll have.
He wants a basketball tournament that night or a soccer game or?
Yeah, no, there's nothing.
He's allowed to do that after you guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we didn't even discuss any, we just said nothing.
You just care about what you want. Not that I'll be.
Yes.
During your timeframe, there'll be nothing.
I'm sure everybody will probably be tired.
Anybody from the audience wish this is a public hearing, so anybody from the audience wish to just speak on this? Anybody from the audience wish to speak on this? Anybody from the audience wish to speak on this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you again for your persistence, any further questions from the council?
Is there, is there a charge, we never really mentioned that, I'm just for the public purposes.
Yeah, so there is going to be a $5 charge to get into the main doors, but there's going to be like a lot of activities that are free, so like he has like the bouncy houses inside, those will be free, the arcades will be open, we're going to have like face painting, things like that will be free, yeah. Instead of doing it, sorry, instead of parking, the parking fee that we usually do, we just kind of reversed it.
Is anyone selling any, I'm sorry, I didn't intend to, is there anyone selling anything inside? It's just a $5 charge?
Right, well, we have vendors, we have vendors there, so the vendors will be selling whatever they.
Is that a peddler's thing?
It's part of the show, so I'm not going to, I don't know if it's a peddler's thing.
No, it doesn't come under peddlers, peddlers are outside on the road.
Roadways.
Roadways.
Right, it's indoors.
It's indoors.
Okay. Okay.
But it's part of the Rotary, it's not part of Longplex, it's, it's part of their show.
Right, okay.
Any other questions from the council? Any other questions from the council? Well, Donna, you were going to make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that the Portsmouth Tiverton Rotary Club, approval of the sound variance for sixty-fourth Annual Father's Day Car Show at Longplex Sports Center, three hundred Industrial, Industrial Way on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two from eight AM. You said nine.
Well, they have to set up.
It starts at nine, but eight is when the.
Eight AM to five PM, and approval of special event permit, non-advertised.
You don't need that.
Yeah.
Do I have a second to Donna's motion?
A second.
Okay, I'll give it to, Jay, you were quicker.
That could do it.
Okay, we'll give it to Deb. Whichever the clerk wants to get. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Again, thank you and good luck.
Thank you all so much for your help.
Thank you for your patience, too.
Yes, and thank you guys, I really.
Any questions? Please reach out to the chief or the fire marshal, Janet, they'll help you, I'm sure.
I will, definitely, thank you.
Let me, yeah, I'm gonna call them, so.
I don't see you guys there.
Item six B, Arts and Artisan Festival, Alyssa Wood. Approval of sound variance for Arts and Artisan Festival at Milpond Shops at Tiverton Four Corners, three nine eight zero Main Road on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two from ten AM to four PM, and approval of special event permit. Open the public hearing, Ms. Wood here.
Uh, we have received a email from Ms. Wood, uh, that she is ill and she'd like to continue this to the next town council meeting.
Okay, so this will reschedule this for May ninth. Okay, so we will continue the public hearing. Do I need a motion on that, Mike? Motion to continue the public hearing to May ninth on the Arts and Artisan Festival?
Second.
No, you're making the motion, Jay's making the second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, Jay, thank you for accepting that second. You didn't hear me, did you?
I wasn't even looking.
You seconded the motion to continue. Moving on, we are now on item, we're on general business. Councilor Vera?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move, uh, nine, general business, like to move up letter F, G and H. Rick Rogers, we usually make him wait here until nine, ten o'clock at night, every night, I'm sorry, but we make Rick wait here all the time and we want him to go home, he's worked all day, unlike you guys, and we'd like him to go home and rest. Rick, I know you, I saw you walk in.
He stays on his own.
Well, that's his choice, um, as long as he has his own popcorn. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
He can do the polls, Deb.
And the polls, so can you move nine, I?
I'd like to amend it and add nine, letter I, discussion of the National Grid Joint Poll Petition.
Are you okay with adding nine?
Does he have anything to do with the mowing of second?
No, that's precarious cemetery.
So, um, we have a motion and a second to move nine, items nine, F, G, H and I to next on the agenda. Um, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Okay, so Rick, I want to talk about, um, uh, these, these possible budget transfers. Twelve thousand dollars, I'm not gonna read the accounts, the numbers, from the DPW Maintenance Workers Account, um, to the minor equipment replacements, eight thousand dollars from the DPW Maintenance Workers Account to the salt, sand and gravel account, nine thousand dollars from the snow removal account to the salt, sand and gravel account, thirteen thousand five hundred ninety dollars from the DPW Maintenance Workers Account to the restraint cap, what's that?
Restrictive capital.
Restrictive capital, thank you, uh, to use plow trucks, and then a hundred and forty dollars from the staff salaries account to the, um, uniform account. Rick?
Yes, and thank you for your consideration, uh, in moving me up, I don't require that, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, the, I don't have anything in particular to offer except what is written here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up on these transfers. Does anybody have a particular question?
Any questions from the council?
No, it was all in the back, I think. Mm-hmm. It is what it is, I mean.
So what, is that what our overage was total for salt, sand and gravel, seventeen thousand?
Not yet.
Not yet? Well, to the storms today?
Well, for storms, it's. Yeah. Yes, hopefully that would, this, this amount is estimated to replenish the, the salt, sand shed. Right now, I think there was a transfer before of maybe ten, fifteen grand, I forget. Uh, but we'd rather buy it now at this year's prices because typically they either stay the same and go up.
Yep, and they're probably gonna go up right now.
They went up a lot this year, too, didn't they? Yeah.
Yeah.
It went up forty-six to sixty-four dollars.
So my only question, Rick, is why do we have so much left in Maintenance Workers Account?
There's a couple of reasons for that. One is the part-time mechanic position wasn't filled until late, and it might have also been that somebody was out on workers' comp, so that position is paid by workers' comp, not by the salaries.
That'll do it.
Any other questions from the council?
No. And there was something with the uniforms, right, that the contract was spread over two years or?
Yes, for the one hundred and forty, Deb?
Yes.
Yes, it's a three-year contract, but every year you try to budget, and they can spend it anytime within that three years, so it's sort of a inherent, uh, incompatibility, so you just estimate the best you can.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the budget transfers from each of the accounts listed under items F, one, two, three, four, five, to those accounts to which they are listed to be transferred.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, discussion and possible vote to approve an extension of the FY twenty twenty to twenty-two contract with Cintas Corporation for Uniform Rental, subject to no lower bids being received on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, which is tomorrow.
Yes, and we wanted to cover our bases. If we renew with Cintas, we have to notify them in writing by April thirtieth, and we, and the meeting is today, and the bids come in tomorrow, so if we want approval to tentatively extend the contract, we need it at today's meeting. And as you wrote in there, it's subject to no lower bids being received.
So this is in anticipation of saving money, not expending money. If the current contract is the lower rate, then when the bids come in, we would extend.
And do we have any bids in yet?
They don't come until the twenty-sixth.
Oh, they won't?
That's why. We don't have another council meeting.
I'm used to bids coming in during a certain period.
Now, they come in and they get all open at the same time.
Yep, okay. Um, any further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Please do.
I'll make a motion, uh, that for the extension of the, for year twenty twenty twenty-two contract with Cintas Corporation for Uniform Rental, subject to no lower bids being received on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jay?
Can we just amend that, no lower, no lower responsive, responsive bids, because there could be a little bid that may not meet the requirement, so no lower responsive bid. No lower responsive bid.
No lower.
Responsive.
Responsive bid, no lower responsive bid. Okay, I was just reading this.
You might get a little bid for like, you know, two dollars, but the papers, the uniform may be made out of paper or something.
Right, right. Okay, no lower responsive bid. Donna's motion, Jay, you're okay with that, second?
Yeah, what he said.
Yep.
I did, I did say it.
And any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, and Rick?
Thank you.
Discussion and possible vote to grant DPW permission to hire extreme grinding to grind the yard waste at the landfill with a cost not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
Yes, we put that out. Typically, nobody, there's only maybe two outfits that bid on this or, or, nobody really bids on it anymore, uh, submit prices, it's a very specialized, uh, piece of equipment, and this year we reached out to three people, only one was interested in doing it and submitted a price, but on the plus side, he kept the same price as he did last year, so that's certainly a good deal.
Yeah.
Any questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Donna.
To grant the DPW permission to hire extreme grinding to grind the yard waste at landfill with a cost not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a second from Bill? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then item I, discussion and possible vote to approve National Grid Joint Poll Petition, Cornell Road, polls thirty-two, thirty-two through eighty-four, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-six through eighty-four. Why would there be duplicate counts?
Side of the road.
Oh, either side, okay.
The, typically on that, the thirty-two dash eighty-four and the thirty-six dash eighty-four, it might be a guy wire poll.
Okay. Oh, so it's not through, it's dash, okay.
Right.
Got it. I thought there were multiple polls.
Yes. Uh, seven polls, and in case anybody cares, it's the north end of Cornell Road, not the southern, it's the Cornell Road that's accessible verse via Bogomash, not, not via King.
And they are replacing these for safety reasons?
Uh, they're.
Upgrading their systems.
Upgrading the systems. Other questions? Do I have a motion? Donna?
Make a motion to approve the National Grid Joint Poll Petition, Cornell Road, polls thirty-two to thirty-eight, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-six to eighty-four.
And just to correct what I said wrong, it's actually thirty-two dash eighty-four and thirty-six dash eighty-four.
The dash. Okay, with the dash.
Second?
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Now, you're welcome to stay. If you have popcorn, you have to share.
Thank you.
Or you can go watch the Celtics games.
Thanks, Rick.
Moving back to the top of the general business agenda, Mr. Michael Monte, Esquire for Vincent Vivona, petition to abandon Patrick Avenue and a portion of Harrington Avenue, discussion and possible vote to refer to the planning committee. Mr. Monte?
Good evening, council members. Don't have too much here, um, happy to have this referred to the planning board. If there are any questions, happy to answer them now as well. Um, this is a petition to abandon two paper roads, uh, over near Saudi Pond. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council members have questions?
My question is, these are paper streets, are the adjacent properties gonna assume the ownership of half of each side?
That's correct, that's how it would, that, that's the mechanism by which it would work.
And are all the butters in favor of that, do you know?
So we've reached out to them, um, and we haven't heard back from any of them. My office sent them letters and, you know, a couple of weeks to get back to us and, and didn't hear anything, but, you know, they, they pretty much benefit from the, because they get a little bit more land.
And by a little bit, it's maybe a hundred square feet?
It's, yeah, it's de minimis and stuff, but.
It's from the center line.
Right, right.
Ten feet on each side.
Yep.
Does it landlock anybody's property?
So there's one property that would become landlocked. Um, if you look at, um, plat five fifteen, uh, which was submitted as Exhibit B as part of the petition, um, lot two, three, seven, um, would become landlocked.
All right, these are very small numbers, can you give us an idea of where that?
Are they, is that person one that did not respond to you?
No one responded.
No one did?
Yep.
So they may not know or?
Correct, yeah, and, and there's a statutory notice mechanism prior to, but, um, yes, right now, it could be the case that they're not aware. Um, and if, for whatever reason, you know, we. Did everyone find that, two thirty-seven?
No.
So, councilwoman, the, uh, so this is just a petition right now, if, if the planning board makes a recommendation, they'll be, we'll have to certify paper notice and publish notice, and there's a whole process that we have to go through. Um, I will tell you just, generally, we don't like to create, uh, lots that don't have frontage, so we'd probably, the planning board will probably make a recommendation as far as easements to have access to that lot, but I don't, you know, I can't speak for them at this point, but, um, so then the whole process will allow it.
So what we're doing tonight is just referring it to the planning?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, okay, and they can figure it out, right?
Yeah, because we have to go through that public hearing process and everything else.
I'm sure Rick might have a comment on it, too, at some point.
Come on up, Rick.
Quick question, I know it's going before the planning board and all that, but it is possible, since the lawyer is here, maybe get some free, free information for the town. It's possible for development to be created and the right-of-way, the paper street, not to be turned over to anybody, and technically, the person who develops the property still owns that right-of-way. He sells off lots, the right-of-way has never been turned over or needed to the town, so that paper street may be owned by somebody. So that's my question for the lawyer, has that been researched in town records to know whether who, somebody in particular owns it?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, we, uh, reached out to the solicitor and the town planner, um, and have been informed that they are public rather than private roads, um, so our research wouldn't indicate that anyone other than the town, um, owns the roadways. And additionally, um, if, if you all found two thirty-seven, you'll also likely be able to find, uh, lot one eighty, which is three, um, sort of, uh, three one eighty marks, that's the property that my client owns, so if there is, for whatever reason, an objection to abandoning all of Harrington Avenue, um, we just assumed it would be more efficient to do it that way, but we'd also be happy to just have the portion of butting his property, um, abandoned, we're really just open to whatever the town and the neighbors would like to do.
So quick question, is, might already be, it looks like one seventy-eight is landlocked, or is there a road there that is on that thick line?
Um, I'm looking for one seventy.
So once, if you look at your clients, look towards the water.
Yeah, so, one seventy-eight, um, that, I don't know if there's, that's the, the Massachusetts line.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's a road there, but this petition would have no effect on one seventy-eight.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Looks like it, but that Saudi Pond Avenue may, probably extends, it's just not showing because it's in Fall River right there.
Yeah.
So those are all the two things we ought to look at when it comes.
So is there also two thirty-four that would be landlocked?
Um, where is that, Chris?
Buffett Harrington is across the street from.
That, that is correct, two thirty-four as well as two thirty-seven, thank you.
So your client who owns one or more of these properties?
Correct.
Two, both, all three one eighties, yeah?
Yeah, um, the property owner is building a single-family home, um, and he would like to be able to build it across where one of the paper streets is right now, so, um, it necessitates the town abandoning it, otherwise he, you know, have to work out a different plan.
So this is not like a homeowners association doing it?
Nope.
So would the motion be to refer to the planning board for any portions, not just the entirety or any portion thereof?
I think they would understand that.
Okay, I just didn't know if they had to do that.
Yeah, so it's really referring to that planning department for review.
Review and recommendation.
Recommendation.
Which includes all of it, part of it, none of it, whatever.
Other questions for Mr. Monte? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, um, refer Mr. Monte's petition to abandon Patrick Avenue and a portion of Harrington Avenue to the planning department for their review and recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Deb, seconded by Jay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Thompson is not able to make it tonight because he is not feeling well, so we're gonna reschedule that to May 9th. Stuart Gilfillan, Recreation, discussion and possible vote on advertising, public hearing for proposed amendments to Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 7861, non-residential parking penalties for violation of Article and Section 7885, parking prohibited between 10:00 PM and sunrise. Mr. Gilfillan?
Evening. So this is, last time I was here, we were discussing a couple of other ordinances that I think are on the agenda for public hearings. This is one that would set a timeframe. It aligns, from a format standpoint, with how the town has handled parking restrictions in other areas of town, and what it essentially does is restrict parking at Fogland and give the police the ability to ticket and charge a fee for people that are there during the evening. So, the reason I mention the other ordinances is that they collectively fit together, so essentially, it would be sunrise to 8:00 AM would be Tiverton Residence, 8:00 to 4:00 would be open to all, 4:00 to 10:00 PM would be Tiverton Residence, and then 10:00 to sunrise would be no parking. And the 10:00 to sunrise is what's in front of you here.
So, Three-Rod Way is the road coming in?
It's, yes, I think we looked at it, it's the road, if you're where...
It's the road to the right.
Yeah, open spaces on the right and Recreation is on the left.
Three-Rod Way parallels the water.
Yes. Wilcox Street is the road that goes to the backside? Okay. So it's to the, from Three-Rod Way and Fogland Road to the intersection of Three-Rod Way and Wilcox Street, so from end to end? Okay. So, tonight, we are looking simply to discuss this and advertise for a public hearing. Any discussion from the council members? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, what would be, we can't fit it into the public hearings for the other ones, it's too late for that? Okay.
June 13th.
So then, this would have to be June... Oh, June 13th, I thought you meant those were the public hearing dates for those other ones. So, do I have a motion to advertise for a public hearing on the proposed changes to Section 7861, non-residential parking penalties for violation of the article, and Section 7885, parking prohibited between 10:00 PM and sunrise, which is a new article ordinance for a public hearing to be held at our June 13th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Bill? Bill, and then Jay, discussion?
So, does that include the road that goes to the Cove?
We were not including that part of the road because Recreation's sort of jurisdiction or coverage is only in what's outlined here.
But people would still be able to go out to the Cove and park there.
If that was something that we wanted to be amended to include, which is just not under Recreation's scope.
Yeah, opens, that's open space, so certainly, they can come to the public hearing and suggest that.
That should be noted to the public, not to the...
Yep, yep. Same as that road that I know they don't really want anymore, I think, I don't know what that is.
The one that's blocked off, that goes to the water, from Three-Rod.
Right.
It's the same road, I'm talking about.
Same, it's the same name?
Yeah.
It's not Two-Rod Way?
It might be Two-Rod.
That might be Two-Rod Way. I get confused with the rods. Rick, what's the road as you come in to the right?
Yes, when you leave Fogland Road and you take a right to the north, it's Fogland Point Road, and also known as Three-Rod Way, from that intersection, and it's Three-Rod Way all the way up to the beach on the north end.
Right.
Where you, where people come along and park and go fishing, whatever. So it goes beyond Hart Street. Three-Rod Way continues past those three private roads, it goes to the beach.
So it does take the hard right?
It takes that right.
Goes out to the Cove?
Yes, up to, my understanding is up to where it becomes, you know, shoreline.
Yep, so, but that little sandy road, just as you're coming in the entrance, what's that one called?
The...
The little...
The crossing the bathhouse?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, there's no...
Oh, there's no name to that? Okay, I thought it had the no-name road?
Yeah, it's just an accent.
This is what Google called it, so that's...
So, Rick, are, is Wilcox and all those little streets down there, are those public ways?
It's an interesting question, it's been coming up with discussion, but from my knowledge, they're private, but, it was discussed briefly today on another subject, that that would have to be determined by maybe Michael, volunteer, volunteer, the town's solicitor.
I asked, because I saw a thing that said they were, but when Stu invited me to go down there and take a drive around, they all say, right, they maintain the road privately, but we do pick up trash.
Yes.
We have a resident who's saying yes. They are private.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean they're only used privately.
Nope, you're right. You are right.
Any further discussion on this? I think we have the motion in a second. All those in favor to have, hold the public hearing in the 13th? Yes, all unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. Next item we have is Town Administrator and Michael Decotis, discussion and possible vote to approve the use of funds from Tiverton Power Contribute, from the Tiverton Power Plant contribution to be used for the middle school softball field renovations in an amount not to exceed $12,000. Mr. Decotis?
Hi, I'm not Mr. Gilfillan, but we do look alike, right, Stu? He's not listening. Everywhere I go, they say, "You're Stu Gilfillan." Good evening, everyone. The quick story is, we've privately raised funds to start a middle school softball and baseball program for the first time ever. The teams are currently playing now in their first season, and when we started this venture, part of it was raising private money through grants and donations, not only to pay for uniforms and umpires and baseballs and catcher's equipment, but to help fix the fields and build a field, because there's no softball field at Tiverton Middle School. There is a baseball field. So, we were able to start out by raising about $15,000 privately, and we fixed up the baseball field. If anyone gets a chance to go to the middle school, just put your eyes on it, it's beautiful. And when we started doing the work to build out the softball field at Tiverton Middle School, we didn't realize how much work it was gonna be. It was a little past what we thought, so I had a conversation with Stu, and he gave me some avenues to try to go, one of them was R. Port Grants and some other things, and that led to a conversation with Denise, which led to a conversation with Chris, and the thought process was that the power plant was able to donate some money to the town for some civic appropriations, to do some things in the town, and this probably fit the bill. So this $12,000 that we're asking for would go to the school department and go into the Tiverton Middle School Baseball and Softball Fund. The $12,000 that we're asking for would finish putting up all the fencing, because there's no fencing there, so for the dugouts, the backstop, all the dirt that's making the field, and the dugout benches, which are about $2,500, all that together with the concrete is about $12,000. So, I'm here to answer any questions, but this is what is on your agenda.
So, just for a little clarity, the project that he's been working on, while it's been somewhat funded through the school as ministerial duties, it's not school funds he's using.
Right.
He's been generating a lot of charity to do what he's been doing, and it's a very, very worthwhile public project. I think the Tiverton Power would, wouldn't mind having their name associated with, to be recognized as a civic matter, but this is not why, while he's saying the money would be deposited at the school, it would only be to expend for the purchase orders that they've encumbered to do these, what he's looking to do.
Right.
It's not something to, like, subplant school funding.
Right.
That's not what this is.
So, all the money, like Chris said, that was privately raised, was given to the school, and it just went into an account for accounting purposes. This would do the same thing, it would just fall under the, the account for middle school baseball softball, but it's all, it's all private money. And, as Chris said, alluded to, we even talked about putting, like, a little plaque somewhere up on the fencing area and thanking the power plant and...
And all your contributors.
And all the contributors that gave privately to this, including Representative Edwards and Senator Phelag and Bally's Twin River and everyone else.
Questions?
So, would this be something, because right now, it's a Tiverton Middle School program? Is it something that could be used for the town?
Thank you, that's a great question, so that's where it gets dialed back to Stu. Part of the problem, I think, we have in town is, we have a lot of kids and we don't have a lot of fields. However, this field would be used by Tiverton Little League for softball. The new women's softball league, the adult league, they would probably, their practices. So this is a field that would multi-use, it wouldn't just be the middle school girls. It would be the women's league, it would be Little League, and I think there's some other people that do want to use the field. So it, it does open things up, because right now, if you go by Town Farm, you'll see a soccer field painted in center and left field, a softball field. We can't even play games when they're there, and this is just the reality of having a lot of kids, and, and so this will help.
That's great, because I've been on that soccer field when the softballs have come into the field, and, and the programs have just grown.
Sure.
And you're constantly looking for fields.
Yes, and even last year, we had to have spotters, so we have to have adults stand out in left field and say, "Watch out," for parents sitting watching soccer for balls. So, yeah, so this will alleviate a lot of what we're, we're doing, is to have these fields. The women's league couldn't find places to practice last year, there's just no field availability.
So, are they, are they at Boogamash now, is that what they're...
The, the middle school girls?
Yeah.
Yes, so right now, what happens is, the boys go after school, they have 3:00 practice on the days they have practice, just like basketball or cross-country, anyone. The girls have to go home, and they have to get their parents or someone to drive them back to Boogamash to practice at 4:00, which is, is tough on the parents.
That's a hardship.
If, once we get this field done, and we're hoping that if we get this tonight and we move it forward to tomorrow to the school committee, we maybe can finish it by next weekend, and the girls can be out after school next week at 3:00 for the last three weeks of the season, and alleviate all the tension on the parents trying to get kids back and forth.
So you have a big group working on this?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of people, and there's a lot of people putting a lot of time into this.
Where is it exactly on the school grounds? Like, on the other side of the parking lots?
Yeah, but when you come into the middle school and you go way into the back of the parking lot, they've always used that top field for football practice and lacrosse practice, and at the way back, and I never knew this till last year, there's an old rusty backstop, and I guess when they built the middle school in the 70s, they built the backstop with the intention of building a softball field, but they never built it. But they built the baseball field below. So, we have taken all the rusty, because if anyone ever even touches it, that's a tetanus shot waiting to happen, so we've stripped it all down, and we're waiting to get this going so we can put the fencing up and, and finish everything out, but it's in the far back corner. So the baseball field's in the front and the softball's in the back, so they're away from each other.
Nice.
You're welcome.
Other council members have questions? Deb, did you have something else?
No.
So, Mike, are you here on behalf of the school committee?
I'm not. Yep, privately, it is, it is on our agenda tomorrow night, if this was able to be approved, that we would vote to, to take this.
So, the fields are the, under the jurisdiction of the schools, correct?
Yeah, that's what I understand. Yes, that field is, yes.
In the north of the high school.
In the high school.
So then, who manages, who can use, at what point, who manages the scheduling?
So, as I understand it right now, you have to fill out a, a building or field permit use request to the schools for that, right?
So you talked about a bunch of different leagues being able to access that. Are we certain that they're going to be able to access that?
So, I know that the women's league has already put in a request to use that. They, they start in July, so their season's after everything else is done. I'm putting one in for Little League. Those go to the superintendent, the athletic director, and the building principals.
What if the school decided they needed it for something school-related, and somebody else already had it scheduled, would they be able to take them out?
So, it could always happen, so obviously, they want to give school the priority on that. The, the nice thing about middle school sports in the spring is they end by mid-May, so literally, these girls started in March, they've been out there playing, the boys too, on the baseball field. This'll be over by third week of May. Little League will come in after that, will probably use it for a month or so, and then the women's league doesn't start till July, and I think the reason why they do that is so we don't all bunch up on top of one another. But the question that you answered is, yes, the school would always have the priority, but they wouldn't need it in the summertime for anything.
So my one concern with this, and I appreciate all the fundraising and all that you've done with this, is that I don't understand why this wasn't put on the list of projects that the school committee wanted us to consider for, for the gambling money or for this money. I would expect that when we get things from, and I know you're not here for the school committee, but I expect when we get lists from the school committee that they be complete and prioritized, and I don't remember this ever coming before.
And to be fair to that, this didn't get approved to the school committee till December, so when they came, when they were working with you, that was before then. I, I, we literally met in November with this private group and came in December, so in defense of that, I would say if they knew that before, this would have been in there. Believe me, I would have wanted it that way. It's been a hard thing, finding grants and raising money privately to do this, much harder than it would, it would have been, but if I could say this the right way, we wanted to do this so it didn't cost the taxpayers any money.
We, we actually were looking at proposals up through March, so I, I appreciate what you said, but I don't accept that the school committee didn't know, or the superintendent didn't know of this as a possibility.
All right. We did, we did say we were gonna raise all the money, though, we did. We didn't want the school department to have to take any money out when the condition that they're in, I could say more, but...
So who's going to maintain them?
The fields will be maintained by the school department during the school time, during the summertime. I could tell you, for Little League, we do all our own fields over at Town Farm, we do Pecasa, we do all that. And then the women's league, if they use it, they'll, they'll maintain it, they'll rake it, they'll line it.
And what about any, in the future, any more major renovations that need to happen from ongoing use?
Yeah, I don't see anything else after this, so if we were able to get this, we would have all the safety barriers in place, the dugouts, the eight-foot fencing, the bleachers, the benches. So, going forward, could there be something small? There could, but this should be the footprint of where it needs to be. The only other thing I can think of is you maybe want to add bleachers or fans. The problem is the, where it sits, it'll run into the soccer, I mean, the practice football field, we just won't be able to do that. So, I think what we're doing with this money will, will be it. I don't think there's much more we could do to it.
Thanks. Anybody have a motion?
I have a question.
All the question?
Well, this is school property, and we're using community funds for school property. It would be town ballparks and that sort of thing, I think, for this, I think it's being kind of misused. I don't know what to do about it unless the school wants to give the town that piece of property. I, I just, I mean, but it is the school's.
Yeah, it's managed, well, well, as long as, as long as it's an educational use, which this would be, it's managed by the schools.
I have a problem with it, not with who's gonna use it, I just have a problem with, seems kind of underhanded, not by you, but that they, they knew this has been like that, they haven't maintained it, and now all of a sudden, we're gonna use community money for some, this actually, school property, so that the community can use it.
Yeah, just to be clear, it's not that they haven't maintained it, it was never built out.
Never did anything with...
This is a brand-new project, I think. This is a brand-new project by the citizens to try to...
I just have a problem with it, because it's constantly, stuff like that has happened. This isn't the only thing. I, I don't know what to do about it, I just feel really uncomfortable with it, and, and then you, the school's gonna be in charge of who's gonna be able to play on it, and it looks like a, a great idea to use the community money, but I think it's kind of out of place to be using that for that.
Well, if I could add, Ms. Cook, the, the Little League is, is community, and your, your women's softball league, just like the men's softball league, they're, they're part of your community.
No, 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 I know, the, the problem is it's school property, and they should use school funds.
Yeah, and, and, well, I understand that, Donna, and to be fair, and tell me if I'm speaking out of turn, Pecasa fields are school property, too.
Right, but they, they go through the Recreation Department, correct, Stu?
They go through the Recreation.
And for a part, and go through the Recreation Department, Stu? Yeah, so it's, 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 it is gray, but I won't deny that.
So let me ask you this, then, if, if we're saying we're using, we may use this community use money, if you will, for this purpose, could we not have that field also go through the Recreation Department? Would you be averse to that if that's what we suggested? Okay.
I think that's the answer, this is what I...
I think outside of the school, during school hours of the middle school, which Stu works with the athletic director, so he, he knows the schedules, I don't... I don't see why he couldn't do the same thing.
Weekends, after-school, summer holidays, that kind of stuff.
That, I think that's the only way to do it, actually.
I swear, we're not the same person.
We did talk about switching for him. So, to be clear, I'm not advocating for that particular piece, but I think what could be arranged, if the school committee and the school was amenable to it, is an arrangement where during school hours, school use takes priority, and outside of that, Recreation has the ability to approve.
And that's what you do for Pecasa right now?
Well, and actually, even within the fields of Pecasa, the schools apply to us to use them. We have sort of an understanding there because of concerns that Pecasa, the principal, had, and we're trying to be very respectful of that. But I think we're open to anything, and I would echo Mike's comments that we're tight for fields, and anything that provides us more resources anywhere in town is a benefit.
So if our motion included using the same model that you use for Pecasa to manage them, would you be okay with that?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I would be okay with that.
So I will entertain a motion on this item?
So Donna was making a motion, right?
No, she was asking a question. So here, I, go ahead.
I will make a motion that we approve an amount of $12,000, not to exceed $12,000, to be used, I'm sorry, to be used for the middle school softball field renovation with the use of the Tiverton Power, don't, I'm going to wave a, grant, I guess you'd call it, with the proviso that the Recreation Department assume control for scheduling and use.
In the same manner as they do for Pecasa?
In the same manner as is done currently with Pecasa.
Second.
Any further discussion? Donna?
No.
Oh, okay. Anybody? All those in favor? Unanimous.
The town thanks you. We appreciate it. Thanks for the help, everyone.
Thanks, Mike, for all your work on that.
Thank you for doing that for us. The kids will get a lot of use out of it too, and the women's league will be happy. Thank you.
So, Donna, do you want to take these items together, or do you want to take them separately? So the next items, just so folks know, it's Councilor Cook, discussion and possible vote on our resolution for a coastal buffer zone to allow for aquaculture operations and minimize conflicting uses. There are two items under it, a letter from the Harbor Commission Chair Bruce Cox to the town administrator regarding the Tiverton Conservation Commission letter on shoreline setback for new aquaculture leases, and number two, letter from Harbor Commission Chair Bruce Cox to town administrator, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association letter. So they obviously go together, so... Donna, did you want to say anything before I refer to Bruce?
I think the letters should be read first, and then maybe the resolution will make sense to people.
So I think we have the letters, so I don't know that we need to read them out loud.
And Bruce can, did you want to rejoice?
Yeah, Bruce can summarize.
I can summarize these two matters. Good evening, Bruce Cox, president, chairman of the Harbor Commission. Both these entities, the Conservation Commission came before us at the same time that Saltwater Anglers, well referred to as the Anglers, came before us. The issue is basically the same concept. How do you address aquaculture farm locations? The regulations in the ordinances or the, of the CRMC are not really clear on that. They are very poor with regards to notification. Tiverton, because of the proximity of these two particular farms that were, one of which has actually withdrawn, has become a bit of a hotspot for that issue. The one that's still in play positioned themselves right in a hornet's nest of fishing activity, which was not known to many of the Harbor Commission members, but it came forward afterwards and is being reviewed by CRMC at length. The Conservation Commission came forward with a proposal that we suggest that a, we should send a letter to code CRMC that says, "Any aquacultural farm will be 1,000 feet offshore." And their letter was well-written, and the only thing that we added to it was to define what we meant by the shoreline, which is at the end of it, my letter is that by the shoreline we mean the nearest point of the lease is no less than 1,000 feet from the contiguous mean water, mean high water line, excuse me, or the budding shore. Interestingly, that's right now a very big question in the state its own, right? But what I, you know, what generally people meant was, where's the debris line? Where can you identify where the water gets to so that there is a boundary between the shore and the aquaculture farm that can be utilized for people to transient and use the water? This is primarily for smaller crafts, because at 1,000 feet, every mile an hour is 1.5 feet. A kayaker going two or three miles an hour is going to take him about five minutes to paddle straight out to it. My boat, which goes six, you know, I get about a second, and that's about it, going that much faster. So I'm not going to go there other than run peril to the shore. But the point is to provide a buffer for smaller craft people to be able to utilize the water in that area. The Anglers were of the same, similar opinion, and also wanted more aggressive approach acknowledgement by coastal, that they are actually have a conflict of interest going on. They are promoting and pushing for aquaculture quite aggressively, if you read the full extent of the Anglers' letter, without stepping forward and saying, "Well, wait a minute, there are other people here involved." You know, as the aquaculture people from Cuddyhunk explained to me, "Everyone likes my oysters, no one likes my farms." That's a truism, in part because the farms are farms. They are animals, they are harvested, there's a process. Where do you draw the line? The people are getting a distinctive advantage here, they're using public property for personal gain. And that's the dilemma that's faced. It is an area controlled by CRMC. We need to, they, CRMC is listening, much to my surprise. We had the head of CRMC, second-in-command, and the person in charge of aquaculture approach us and come to address us at our Harbor Commission meeting, which is something I've never anticipated or expected, but they are hearing and listening to us. The commission is actively working right now to develop, rewrite our harbor management plan, and a large component of that is the aquaculture component, because that is lacking in virtually every harbor management plan in terms of trying to protect their rights, recognizing that the bottom of the water is the state's, not ours. But they hopefully are listening, I believe they are listening. And so the Anglers came forward with a well-articulated letter, does not to be rewritten, it just need to be, needs to be endorsed. Similarly, the Harbor, the Conservation Commission came forward with a, here's a line, you got to start someplace, here's a line, we think 1,000 feet is a rational point. And it's not irrational. There's a lot of the waters available in the Secana River that, you know, the interesting thing is, a lot of the Secana River is not that deep. The channel, which is the, regulated by Army Corps of Engineers, you can't put an aquaculture farm in. But over by the island that's in the middle of the Secana River, there's a lot of shallow water there that would be appropriate. There's also, actually, on the Portsmouth side, an area that's designated on charts is fishing, you know, fishing in that area. So they don't need to come close to the shore. I think one of the things that precipitated this is, one of the applicant's original goal was to service their facility by walking out to it at low tide. And the Harbor Commission pushed them out quite a bit before we knew about how intense a fishing area this was. And we thought, okay, at least they've moved, we're trying to work with these people. But then it became quite apparent that what we thought was an adequate effort wasn't sufficient because it's a highly-used area. When you start looking at some of the pictures that are provided, you realize that a lot more goes on there than we were aware of. And, you know, shame on us, I guess, because, you know, we don't know everything about everything. But we did listen, and one of the things that we're pushing for is greater notice be given to the general population anytime an aquaculture farm is proposed, so that two things occur: the aquaculturists aren't caught off guard, and the citizens of the community aren't caught off guard. So that's where we're standing. So that's why we are asking that you endorse the Conservation, we endorse the Conservation Commission's position of 1,000 feet, and we believe that the Anglers' letter should be fully endorsed by this council.
So, help me, being the person who really can't judge distance very well, so just using as an example the two proposed projects that are on, or were both on the drawing board, one is, are either of those, from both shorelines, would either of those be able to fit within that 1,000 feet?
You mean, both shorelines, you mean, Tiverton and Portsmouth? Oh, thoroughly, right. The Secana River is roughly two miles wide.
Oh, okay.
At Ace Hardware tells me to go to Portsmouth, to go to, but I have to swim to do that. So, you know, the Secana River has plenty of breadth, and it, a great deal of the Secana River is in the 16 to 20-foot depth range. I'm from Bristol originally, in my sailing, and the East Passage has 100 feet of water, commonly, 90 feet of water. And people come over here and say, "Oh, my God, there's not enough water." Well, wait a minute, I only draw six feet, I only need nine feet. I don't need, but, you know, 16 is plenty. There are lots of areas in the Secana River area that aquaculture can take place, not walking out to it, but with the other systems in place.
Okay. I want your help in, I think, dispelling a rumor, and I think this would help if you did this. I was asked if there were any proposals in the works for aquaculture in the basin, Fogland Basin.
In the Fogland Basin, just north of Fogland?
Yeah.
No, we have not heard anything of that ilk. One of the things that Coastal did do is they, and we asked them to do that, is that anytime they send a notification to the town, they also send it to the chair of the Harbor Commission, which happens to be me. And it will go forward with whoever follows my position, but the, we have not heard anything, and they are pretty good about trying to do a preliminary concept meeting with any aquaculture farm that comes forward. So no, nothing on the north side of Fogland has been proposed, other than Bowlings are north of it, but they are well north of it.
Right, and I would imagine that that area, given how heavily it's used by windsurfers and the like, would, we'd be hard-pressed, anybody would be hard-pressed to have any type of an oyster farm or something like that in there.
Well, that, and it's a mooring field.
Right. It's a mooring field.
What are you talking about, in the Fogland area?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but no, we haven't heard anything of there.
Okay. Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add on behalf of the Conservation Commission?
Mr. Cox.
Okay.
There have been historically some applications in that area.
Okay.
And also in the Anacquaket, too.
Yes.
They die for various reasons, but they come up quite frequently.
Okay, yeah, I remember in Anacquaket.
Yeah, they've come up in Anacquaket, they came up and went to Seminole. And when they come forward, we very, you know, we point out the conflicts, and relatively rapidly, most people recognize that this is a non-starter.
However, that was in the old days, they've kind of built out South County. One of the reasons we're getting a lot of pressure now, I think, is that all the good areas, all the obvious areas, they're, have been taken, and they're running into more complaints. So this is the new frontier, and we may start seeing them come back again.
That is very true. There is a project ongoing in CRMC called SAM, it's Special Area Management Program. Deb Hagan here is, is our representative there. And they are looking at, how can we develop more aquaculture in this area? Historically, flashback, 60, 80 years, there were large aquacultural developments in the middle of Narragansett Bay, but there weren't, there wasn't the population density, and there wasn't the recreational boating density that there is now. So it is a prime area, but it's got conflicting uses. So the people that are regulating that have to figure out, how do we solve these problems?
And have you read the draft resolution that is before us?
I have not seen that.
Okay. I'm going to let you look at mine, just to...
If I can walk over here and...
Give us a sense. Here you go. Just give us a sense.
You can read this. Don't you have to read that?
Tom, you, I just want to make sure that if that's going to meet what you're asking for, decide to move forward. Mike, is that in, do we have to put that in any format other than what it's in? So while they're, well, I don't want to interrupt them while they're reading.
Did you want to do the cemetery thing, or...
No, just let them read, that's fine, that's fine.
I'll give them time to read.
I don't think anybody is here for the cemetery.
He's got a skin up.
Anyway.
So it would be an affirmed consent of the resolution to CRMC, but it's not binding?
Right, it's just giving a sense of the council.
Correct.
And I agree with Bruce, I do believe they have been listening. We'll see what the actions are, but it's a long process. And empty and some rubber bands.
Thank you. It's Christmas.
So, Tom, your thoughts?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is good. Thank you.
So, any discussion from the council? If not, I have a motion from Donna Cook to approve the resolution that is before us for coastal buffer zone to allow for aquaculture operations and minimize conflicting uses. Donna, do you want to read that, and then we'll look for a second?
Read the resolution.
Read the resolution.
Do you want me to read it?
Read the resolution.
Okay. Town of Tiverton Resolution for Coastal Buffer Zone to Allow for Aquaculture Operations and Minimize Conflicting Uses. Whereas the Town of Tiverton Values Existing Public Access and Use of Coastal Waters, Wishes to Protect That Access and Use as Guaranteed by the Public Trust. And Whereas the Town of Tiverton Values and Wants to Protect the Rights of Repairian Landowners And Whereas the Town of Tiverton Recognizes That Other Municipalities in Narragansett Bay Also Wish to Protect Public Access and Use of Coastal Waters and Want to Protect the Rights of Repairian Landowners And the Town of Tiverton Understands That the Rhode Island State Legislature Gives the Coastal Resource Management Council Jurisdiction Over Coastal Waters And Whereas the Coastal Resource Management Council Is Responsible for Reviewing and Permitting Aquaculture Leases And Whereas the Coastal Resource Management Council Is Exploring Expansion of Aquaculture in Narragansett Bay And Whereas the Town of Tiverton Wishes to Reduce Conflicting Use of Public Waters Protect the Rights of the Public to Access and Use the State's Waters as Guaranteed by the Public Trust and Protect the Rights of Repairian Landowners And Whereas the Town of Tiverton Understands the Need to Accommodate Aquaculture and Other Uses of Tiverton Coastal Waters And Whereas the Town of Tiverton Believes 1,000-foot Buffer Zone for Shoreline in Which No Future Aquaculture Leases Can Be Sited Will Minimize Conflicting Uses And Whereas the Town of Tiverton Believes Excluding the Future Placement of Aquaculture Farms From Type 1 and Type 2 Waters Will Also Minimize Conflicting Uses in the Same Way As 1,000-foot Buffer Zone Whereas the Town of Tiverton Understands That It Has No Authority to Create This Kind of Buffer Zone But Believes Rhode Island State Legislature Has the Authority to Create This Kind of Buffer Zone Through Legislation Now Therefore, Be It Resolved That We, the Town of Tiverton, that the Town Council of the Town of Tiverton As the Rhode Island State Legislature To Develop and To Pass Legislation That Minimizes Conflicting Uses of Narragansett Bay Coastal Waters But Still Allows for Aquaculture Projects By Creating 1,000-foot From Shoreline Mean High-Tide Buffer Zone In Which No Future Aquaculture Leases Can Be Sited Or Exclude Future Aquaculture Farms From Type 1 and Type 2 Waters This Approach Will Help Tiverton and Other Narragansett Bay Communities To Balance Public Waters With Commercial Use and Create More Specific Guidelines For This CRMC and Future Aquaculture Farms Be It Further Resolved Upon Passage of This Resolution, the Tiverton Town Clerk Is Requested to Submit a Certified Copy of This Resolution To Each and Every Member of the Rhode Island General Assembly Who Represent the Town of Tiverton To All Coastal Cities and Towns in Rhode Island. In Rhode Island.
And before we get a second, I just want to, some minor typo amendments on the next to last whereas, there should be an and after buffer zone. And after, at the end of the now therefore, after aquaculture farms, there should be an and, so it'd be and, be it further resolved. So, with that, Donna, do you make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
To move this resolution forward as you read it?
Yeah. I make a motion to move, to move this resolution forward for the Town Council to accept, to send to the said parties in this resolution.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Bruce. Thank Donna for bringing this forward.
Yes, and I do thank you, Donna, very much for doing that. And if I could ask that the Madam Clerk be asked to send that by email to Representative Rogério, she is the Chair of the Commission to Reorganize CRMC, and there under timelines now with the SAMP project, that Deb was kind enough to really bring to my...
Deborah, is it named Deborah?
It's right on the angler's, at the top of the angler's letter.
Oh, okay.
It's her email address. And it's Deborah, D-E-B-O-R-H.
Do I have to amend anything?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Deb.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so, moving right along, discussion of possible vote to award contract for Pocasset Hills Cemetery mowing maintenance and cemetery operations to Jared Ramuno, DBA, doing business as Ramuno's Landscaping.
So, he was the only bear, it's a reasonable bid.
Pocasset Cemetery, are you here for that, Bob?
On my ship.
Well, we do have somebody here for that, we weren't sure.
All right. Who we hatch?
I just want to, last meeting, Cemetery Commission, Mr. Ramuno come, came before us with the contract, we went over it, and we, as a Cemetery Commission, I figured we'll let you guys know, we unanimously approved it. We feel it's a very fair contract, the only thing that's changed over the last 10 years is a $50 increase this year per week, due to the cost of living, price of fuel, and stuff like that. So, as a Cemetery Commission, we are in favor, and we back this.
Okay. Yes, I agree. Okay. We don't have to put out the bid?
This is the bid. This is the bid, and it's the only bid.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to award the contract for Pocasset Hills Cemetery mowing and maintenance and cemetery operations to Jared Ramuno, doing business as Ramuno's Landscaping?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And he's a Tiverton...
On my behalf.
He's a Tiverton resident?
Tiverton resident.
He will also be helped with, the prior vendor will be walking him through, assisting him through the whole thing, so Mr. Holger is offered to ensure that he does all the things that is required by the cemetery.
Ron? Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor rewarding the contract, unanimous. Dog Park Advisory Committee, discussion of possible vote to amend the Resolution 2021-01, Establishing an Advisory Dog Park Committee to Reduce the 17-member committee to 11 members and to Increase the Term Limit from 1 year to 2 years. So, if you remember, the Dog Park Advisory Committee had asked us to reduce the membership in a piece of correspondence, and then at our last meeting, we discussed, oh, no, it wasn't at the last meeting, it was at our, I suggested at our planning meeting, agenda planning meeting, that we think of moving it to 2 years, just so we don't have to come back every year. So, and my guess is that by the time we come back around to this, there's going to be other recommendations from that committee on size and the like. So...
Are you the liaison for that?
No, I don't think, I don't know that we have a liaison for the Dog Park. Joe goes a lot, but...
Yeah, yeah.
But again, the, the, the committee had sent us, because they felt they, if I'm going to paraphrase the letter, they felt that the bulk of their work, the planning and development, needed that larger committee, and now they just need basically a management committee, is what I'll call it.
Well, they know best, I mean, if that's how they feel, can I, we're going to have discussion, or can I make a motion?
Anybody have any discussion? Feel free, Donna.
Okay. I'll make a motion to amend the Resolution 2021-01, Establishing an Advisory Dog Park Committee to Reduce the 17-member committee to 11 members and to Increase the Term Limit from 1 year to 2 years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The only thing I, we would need, Chris, is for you to work with them to decide who continues.
I will.
Because we'll probably have to reappoint then, too.
No, that'll probably be in the next attempt.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed, unanimous, thank you. Discussion of possible vote to approve funds to advertise the proposed planning board fee and escrow schedule for public hearing on May 23, 2022. Chris?
So, these are fees that the planning board have been putting out, they actually, they came in last year, I did run it by the planner to make sure that these are the fees that they are looking to do. I would just add to move it to FY '23 as well, because we're too much short, pretty much short of the end of the year. So, it's both their regular planning board fees and the escrow fees.
So, right now, we're just setting a date for public hearing.
Correct.
And at that public hearing, we can amend it to include the subsequent year.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to schedule a public hearing, to advertise and schedule a public hearing for the proposed planning board fee and escrow schedule to be held on May 20, our May 23 meeting?
So moved.
Donna?
Second.
Jay? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Counselor Burke, discussion of possible vote to set a public hearing date on the proposed amendment for personnel changes in the Personnel Board, and to approve funds to advertise the public hearing. So, you have the sections of the charter that are affected by this before you, and the proposed question before you. Again, we're just looking to have a public hearing. Basically, what we did was really move a lot of the requirements for the department heads to be done through rule ordinance by the council, as opposed to being done through the charter, given that oftentimes, you know, what you want from somebody may change over time, you know, maybe you want somebody with a bachelor's degree, maybe in 10 years, we want somebody with a master's degree, let's just use that as an example. And it also allows us to hire from within and use experience in place of. Mike, did you have anything else? So, this affects the police chief, the town administrator, the fire chief, public works, and I believe that's it for that part. So, I'll just do that part first, that's question number one, and the question before us would be...
So, the question is, I'm sorry.
Yep.
The question says the sample question, we haven't agreed to the question yet, so after the public hearing, you might change the question, that was just put in there as in advance, just to give someone notice what was going on, but, so, that's the first change. If you recall, Constable Woman Cook, you were, you had brought this to our attention, that, particularly with the fire chief, that's why we had this.
Yeah.
And then the second part refers to the Personnel Board, and it clarifies it allows the, the Personnel Board retains their role with all full and part-time job vacancies for town employment. The exception would be for those positions that are temporary, seasonal, less than 180 days, would be done through the town administrator. And they could not exceed 180 days, they could be extended for 90 more days based on the council's approval. So, the administrator would appoint, so, so lifeguards, beach attendants...
Yeah, beach attendants, gatekeepers.
Those types of things.
Part-time, all but DPW for the season.
Right, so, you know, things that we don't want to get bogged down in an unnecessary process. So, that's what that one does. Any questions on that one?
Well, the only motion that's before you today is really just to advertise this for a public hearing, you could decide to, after the public hearing, to not go forward with this or not, but, so this is really just to get the process moving. All ballot questions have to be in by August 5th, so we're ahead of the game, so this gives you plenty of time to have public hearings, hearings if you want, so. I really want to thank the committee for working so hard to get this done in a good manner.
So do I.
Most times, they're not working this quickly to get, we're usually right on the August 5th date, so should give plenty of time for the public to comment.
When would be the earliest on this one?
June 13.
June 13. And that would still give us plenty of time?
Oh, wait a minute. Is that 10?
You don't need 10 minutes. It's advertised, but we'll figure it out.
Right now? What was the other one? What was the one we just did?
Well, that's because of audits.
Oh, okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve this to move to public hearing on a date to be determined in concert with the expectations within the charter for such public hearings?
Yeah. So moved.
Second.
I'm just allowing the town clerk to set the date.
And allow, which allows the town clerk to set the date. So moved. Second, right? You good with that?
Yes.
You good with that? Any discussion? I'm moving these to public hearing. Hearing none, those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? Abstentions? One abstention, Donna. Thank you.
So, the last two items would be done after executive session?
Okay.
But one of them, the, James Coster is ill this evening.
So, do we need to move that?
So, we would probably do a different date for him.
Okay. So, we'll reschedule item 9O to a future unspecified date.
And executive session item 11B.
And executive session item 11B, rescheduled to a future unspecified date.
Probably on your next meeting, May 9th, but...
Okay, so, with, as long as I have a consensus, I'm going to move to announcements, comments and discussion. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
So, Chris and Joan, update on financial town referendum.
So, just so you know, the, as the Budget Committee went through and finished their deliberations, handed in the budget, got all the documents to the clerk, we went through the process of getting approval from the Municipal Department of Finance, Department of Revenue. The motor vehicle taxes came up to be an issue, and it's not just with us, it's with every community. Apparently, there's a significant increase that visioned, and all, that both, both the vendors have had the same issue throughout every community. Our, what we expected to be motor vehicle taxes that were going to be raised at 1.345 million is actually 1.7. The, the issue boils down to that we had to eliminate out of the non-tax revenue, the rebate of $408,000. So, it's a net-net, it's, we're going to raise the same amount of money, we're just going to do it locally through taxation instead of any kind of reimbursement. So, we had to change the formulas on how the, you know, the non-tax revenue decreased, the motor vehicle tax increased. The tax didn't change at all, the levy didn't change at all, but we had to do an adjustment to that. So, we went through that process, the Office of Municipal Finance ultimately did give us the approval. It was advertised in Secana Times this past week, so we are good to go for the public hearing, but I did want you to know that there was a significant difference in the motor vehicle taxes that are going to be raised. There's a compounding issue to this. In the next year, we're limited based on state law as to what we can ever get reimbursed by the phase out of motor, motor vehicles at 1.6 million. So, we're going to have a shortage in the subsequent years, we're going to have to figure out how to wrestle it. I know it's $100,000 or so, but we will figure out an answer to it, but it's something we need to be prepared for in FY '24, so. I know, it's a pain, but motor vehicles' valuations have gone up just as dramatically as houses. It is, it's, I know.
If we're limited, why didn't they just stay with that? Instead of giving us, you know, saying it's 1.7, why didn't they just say 1.6?
Who's, who's motor vehicle, who's motor vehicle do we decide not to tax? It, it creates a, and what we didn't want to do, and there's a comp, another compounding issue to this, is motor vehicle taxes may not go out until September, because the state's wrestling with advancing the motor vehicle phase out to this year, and if they do that, it's really going to put us in a cramp. So, we can live without having to put the taxes out till September, but we would need to raise what the values are that we have in our books. We can't pick and choose who to not tax, or we didn't want to get in the business of sending rebates out. Yeah, I know, this, and I can, I can tell you 66, 18,000 other people...
I'll take one for the gibber.
Yeah, I'm sure you will. So, it really put Dave Roberts' office in a pickle, but it's, we thought this is the fairest way, and it's what the Office of Municipal Finance recommended that we do. They gave us two options, either wait, which was not an option for us, because we, we didn't know what the answer was going to be, and we didn't want to have two financial town referendums over motor vehicle taxes, or we taxed the value that we have in the system and move forward and try to deal with the subsequent years later on.
So, what you're saying is next year, there'll be 100 grand shortfall?
Sure. Because the maximum we'll ever get is 1.6 million, unless, of course, during this deliberate process, because we're the first one through the gate, there are other communities going to be in the same boat as we are, this, this is going to get revisited. So, I don't think it's going to be a harm for us, I think ultimately, it's going to get rectified by the legislature.
So, we should be advocating to our, and I'm sure you are...
We are.
...to our assembly members to fix this for us. Joan, did you have anything?
I just want to give you an update on the FTR process. There are no elector budget proposal petitions, and there's no elector resolution petitions. The financial town hearing is set for May 5th at the Tiverton High School at 7:00 PM. Any mail ballot applications must be returned by May 6th. There's absentee slash early voting on May 19th and May 20th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM here at the town hall, and the FTR is set for May 21st, Saturday, at the Tiverton High School Gymnasium from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
So, for the hearing, I think typically, the president and vice president are up on the dais?
Normally.
To go over the town council resolutions.
So, I will leave it to Denise to see who she wants up there with us, because I am in Denver that day, so. Any questions on the referendum? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to enter into an executive session for the following reasons. A, these are all, I'm just trying to check, okay, two different, yep, okay. Town Administrator 40, under RIGL 4246-5A1, Personnel Job Performance Annual Evaluation for Police Chief Patrick Jones, notice given. We're not doing B, that's being moved, as we discussed. Item C, Council President, Town Administrator, RIGL 42-46-5A2, Collective Bargaining, Update on IAFF Local 1703 Negotiations and Arbitration. Item D, Town Administrator, RIGL 42-46-5A5, Discussion and Possible Vote on Disposition of Publicly Held Property in the Tiverton Industrial Park and Request for Legal Conflict Waiver. Do I have a motion to go into exec session under those items?
So moved.
Jay?
Second.
Second by Bill. All those, we have to take a roll call for this, yes.
Roll call, as long as it's reflected in the minutes, that's fine.
Oh, no?
You can, you can do hands, as long as it reflects who voted it.
Okay. All those in favor of entering exec session? Okay, you got everybody? It's unanimous, so everybody said yes.
So, we will be coming out the vote in open session after?
Yes.
To the outside, yes.
Okay, so... Okay, so.
Deb, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And now we are back to item nine N, Town Administrator, discussion of possible vote to approve a salary increase for Police Chief Patrick Jones effective December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, consistent with the approved FY twenty-two budget. [S02] Some vote. [S01] Second. [S01] Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. [S03] Thank you. [S01] Thank you. [S04] Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. [S04] Motion to adjourn.